Welcome to the May 22, 2012 meeting of the Glendale City Council. May we have a roll call, please?
Council members Friedman.
Here.
Manukian.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Mayor Quintero.
Here. The pledge of allegiance will be led by Councilmember Friedman.
You, please join me in renewing our pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and just.
Shall we pray? Tonight we give thanks for continued blessings on this fine city and its leaders. We ask that you be a guide to our council in all of their considerations. We also ask that you be with us in our daily lives, that we may be positive role models for our future generation of leaders. Amen.
Madam Clerk, may we have your report?
The agenda for the May 22, 2012 regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Thursday, May 17, 2012, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
What's next?
Next are presentations and appointments. At 3A is agenda preview for the meetings of May 29, 2012.
Mr. Taktalian.
Good evening, Mayor Quintero, members of the City Council. Next week, there are no items on the Glendale Housing Authority or Glendale Successor Agency agendas. There will be a special meeting of the City Council in the afternoon, and that is going to be a public hearing by the Director of Community Development regarding Stage One Designer View for the proposed City Center Two project located at 124 West Wilson Avenue. The City Council meeting in the evening has one item under Presentations and Appointments. At 3B, it's the presentation by the APPA recognizing GWP as being a Platinum RP3 utility. Under consent, at 5B, is the Director of Administrative Services regarding increase to contract with independent accounting firm. At 5C, is the Director of Public Works and Information Services regarding implementation of City Works Service Request System in the Public Works Department. At 5D, is the General Manager of GWP regarding extension of software subscriptions for 2013 and 2014. At 5E, is the General Manager of GWP regarding service authorization agreement with CSGI Systems. 5F, Director of Public Works, Community Services and Parks, and Information Services regarding acquisition of software licenses and software maintenance for City Works Asset Management Software. 5G is the General Manager of GWP and Director of Information Services regarding software licenses and software maintenance to assist in the service request and work order management of GWP Water Division. And at 5H, is the General Manager of GWP regarding professional services in connection with the chromium VI removal research project. Under action items, there's only two. At 8A is Director of Human Resources and Director of Finance regarding public agency retirement service, supplementary retirement plan for eligible employees. And finally, at 8B is the General Manager of GWP regarding status of GWP U.S. Department of Energy Supportive Smart Grid Project.
Thank you very much. Next, please.
Item 3B, proclamation designating the week of May 20 through 26, 2012, as Emergency Services Week.
Hey, I do have a proclamation. There are a number of personnel. Proclamation reads as follows: Whereas emergency medical service is a vital public service, the members of emergency medical service teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. Emergency medical service systems consist of emergency physicians, emergency nurses, emergency medical techs, paramedics, firefighters, educators, administrators, and others. The members of emergency medical service teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills. It's appropriate to recognize the value of the accomplishments of emergency medical service providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Therefore, I, Frank Quintero, Mayor of the City of Glendale, proclaim the week, May 20 to 26, 2012, as Emergency Medical Services Week. And the theme is EMS Anytime, Anywhere Will Be There. Mr. Weaver.
I was wondering what you were all doing. This would be a big one. Congratulations to all of you. Emergency arrives, we depend on you, and we do a better job than just about any city around. Angeles, bonding. Times will come for all of us eventually. I had it some pass nice and easily, but just to know you're there is a thank you. Always all thank you for what you do for all of us.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. That's why I sent you down, Mr. Weaver.
Right click on the top.
Very safe place to be. Yes. Well, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council and city staff. Harold Skoggins, Fire Chief. And as the proclamation said, anytime, anywhere. As you all know, we experienced a little bit of that last night, anytime, anywhere. So before we start talking about Emergency Medical Services Week, I will take the opportunity to give the council a brief on the events that took place yesterday evening. Yesterday evening, approximately 8:29 PM, our dispatch center at Verdugo Dispatch started receiving 911 phone calls of a plane down in the 1200 block of Glenwood Road. But it's interesting because two minutes before that, one of our dispatchers was on the phone with Bob Hope Airport, talking him through and getting an update of what's going on, and reporting a plane that was having problems that was trying to make it to Van Nuys from the Omani area. So at 8:29, when our units received the call, our first unit on scene found a single-engine Cessna plane down at 1207 Glenwood Road with one of the wings detached from the plane, and the engine was also detached from the planes. One of the power poles in the area at Glenwood and Bruce was snapped. Oak trees were broken, and there were many wires down throughout the area that were charged lines, that were live wires. When our personnel arrived on scene, we found the patient outside of the plane, crawling outside of the plane. Our paramedics treated the patient as a trauma type of a patient because of the impact and transported that patient to LA County USC Hospital. Throughout the balance of the night, we had a number of problems to deal with in resolving this problem. So we called in a number of our partners to the scene. Glendale Police Department was there with us from the beginning. We called Glendale Water and Power, Public Works, and Glendale PD made the contacts with NTSB and the FAA. About 10:30 last night, we had a briefing. We set the plan for the evening to start working through the problems to get the neighborhood back up and running. The primary piece of importance there was for NTSB to get on scene and to start their investigation and set the plan for the plane to be removed from the neighborhood. So throughout the night, we did that as NTSB worked to remove the plane and do their investigation. Glendale Water and Power, they worked on getting the power back up in the neighborhood. There were approximately 2,000 homes without power for quite a while last night, and they got the power back up to most of them about midnight, all of about 300 throughout the night. Public Works worked to clear the power lines out of the trees, and GPD assisted with the investigation and maintaining the perimeter throughout the night. At approximately 5:48 this morning, most of the first responders were released from the scene as Glendale Water and Power continued to work to get the power back up in the neighborhood. And approximately 11:30 this morning, full power was restored to the final 300 residents. We had approximately four homes that were evacuated throughout the night, and most of those residents went to stay with family and friends, and one of the families were put up in a hotel for the balance of the night. So pretty interesting event, lot of challenges along the way, and I have to tell you, the city as an organization, we went into unified command to solve the problem because we all had a role to play in solving the problems with Glendale Fire, Glendale Police, Glendale Water and Power, Public Works, and NTSB. I'd like to say thank you to the first responders for being professional throughout the night. Thank you to Water and Power, Public Works, and GPD, and the members of the NTSB for responding so promptly to help restore the neighborhood to the community. And now I'll bring up Battalion Chief Ron Gully to talk about EMS Week.
Well, I want to thank you for proclaiming this week, recognizing the efforts of the many dedicated EMS personnel for the week of May 20th to 26th as Emergency Medical Services Week. The motto of this week is more than a job, it's a calling. The men and women of the EMS profession, who are a continuum of care, who save lives day in and day out, one life at a time, are an element of a system that includes the public and the caller, the person that actually makes that 911 call, that emergency. It's their emergency. We have no idea what that emergency will be, but the dispatcher tries to gain as much of that information as possible, and that is the second part of that chain of that continuum. The dispatcher receives the call and offers up pre-arrival care to the persons that are on scene, determines the right resources to be dispatched. Then we have the first responders. There are the fire paramedics, the EMTs, ambulance operators, and quite often, the police officers will show up on scene and help. They start that pre-hospital care and transport the patient to the awaiting hospital. Then, the next part is the emergency rooms, the emergency departments, the ED doctors, nurses, and staff who take over for the more definitive care of the patient. And then not to forget that the many hospitals in our area have hospital administrators that have taken the lead in their organizations to offer up the special services in this community that include chest pain, heart attack, stroke, and STEMI centers that allow us to do more care based on what's found at the scene and go immediately to receive that care. I'd like to take the time to recognize many of the persons that are behind me that are part of that EMS team. We have from Glendale Adventist Lisa Clyborne, the ED Director, right there. Judy Blair, Senior Vice President and Nursing Officer, there. We also have from Glendale Memorial, Claire Hanks. Oh, okay, there you are. From St. Joseph's, Derek Chaney, he's the Manager of Emergency Services. We also have Alex Gazabian, who's, does that work for you? Sorry about that. Who's from the ER. We have Dustin Ashenfelter. How'd I do on that? Better? Very good, thank you. Assistant Nurse Manager at St. Joseph's. And from the American Red Cross, the Executive Director, Ron Farina. Of the GFD staff, we have Cody Smith, who is the EMS Coordinator. We have Greg Anderson, who is our EMT Coordinator. Judy Grimaldi, who is our nurse educator. And Erica Garibian, who is our Office Services Specialist Number Two. We also have two of our AOs here, AO Blinkian and AO Nelson, that's holding the proclamation for us. With that, in closing, the EMS system in the city of Glendale is activated about 13,000 times a year, and the EMS personnel of this community are up to the challenge to provide the utmost level of care and compassion for those who are in need, and I'd like to thank you very much.
If I could just close really quick. I'm sorry, Ms. Weaver. It's important to let the community know when there are opportunities to become a part of the team of the Glendale Fire Department. Right now, if you go to the Glendale Fire Department's website, and that's glindelfiredepartment.com.net or .org, any of them will work, you'll see that we have our Explorer post that's now accepting applications for young people between the ages of 16 and 20. It's that opportunity for members of the community to get a start, to get experience, to come and learn what the Glendale Fire Department's all about. That bulletin will be open until June 16th, and you'll be able to apply to become a fire explorer for the Glendale Fire Department. Like Chief Gully said, it's a calling. It's a great opportunity for young people to start getting their hands on equipment and really learning and doing ride-alongs on what the Glendale Fire Department's all about. So thank you.
All I wanted to say, I should have spoken to the fact, it's inevitable one day we're going to have an earthquake, a big one. And look who we're going to tune to first to help us. And the three of us, just this last week, voted for the RITSI, Regional Leader Model Transportation Center, which will be the center for emergencies during earthquake and whatever, with the airfields there. It'll be a big benefit, so we're happy to vote for that. And one last thing I wanted to add about last night. I woke up this morning and my text messages went off like crazy. I had 16 of them from him. He was out there, he didn't get home till 1:00 in the morning. He was giving us a blow-by-blow description for our-
That's funny, I didn't get any text messages.
You didn't? Well, I got 16 of them. Two this morning, so he was out there, he didn't get to bed till 1:00 in the morning.
He being Scott Ochoa.
Scott Ochoa, our new city manager. Well, not new. Honeyboon's over.
It is over.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you to all of you. Next, please.
At item four, are there any City Council or Staff comments?
City Consular or Staff comments? Ms. Friedman?
Well, first of all, I need to make an apology, probably for all of us, which is that it was such a busy week, week before last, that when I went through the long litany of events that I had attended, I forgot to mention what was probably one of the nicest and most well-planned events, and that was the Commission for the Status of Women's Jewels of Glendale Luncheon. It was a wonderful event up at the Oakmont Country Club, sponsored by and organized by our own Commission on the Status of Women, which is one of our most active commissions. Those commissioners work really, really hard. They earn their paycheck, which is zero, by the way, but they still put in lots and lots of time, and they put together a really wonderful event to honor some of the outstanding women in our community. The women that were honored, the women of courage, were Lori Hartwell, Christine Hovnanian, Betty Porto, and her sister Margarita Navarro, and Suzanne Slaughter. And my friend, former Glendale Mayor Eileen Givens, was given the special Chair's recognition, and Amy Yagarian was the Jem Scholarship Awardee. So I want to congratulate not only the New Jewels of Glendale, but particularly the Commission on the Status of Women for putting together a wonderful event once again. This week, no, last week, I was able to attend the Police Officers Appreciation Luncheon. We just had some of our safety personnel here, and this event was to recognize our men and women in blue who do such a great job of protecting us. It was sponsored by the Glendale Police Foundation, so I want to thank them for what they do. And lastly, I attended the Glendale Chambers Open House for their new office at 701 North Brand. They've moved locations into a really beautiful new office that's going to be, I think, very visible to the community and easily accessible, and I want to congratulate them for their big move. Thanks so much, Mr. Mayor.
You. Okay, I have a number of comments about some of the events that I attended, and then I'm going to adjourn the meeting in memory of Carl Messick. Yeah, starting with Glendale Healthy Community Coalition, at approximately 6:45 in the morning, one of the first people that I see walking through the door is Scott Ochoa. I said, what time did you? Well, he had to have gotten three hours' sleep that night, because I know what time we left the City Council Tuesday evenings. Anyway, it was a great event. He was actually the sort of master of ceremonies and leader of the panel. The Glendale Healthier Community Coalition has been around for quite a few years. Bruce Nelson has kind of been the head of it. Basically, the three hospitals working together in addition to other medical providers and social service agencies. So it's a great panel, and they were specifically working, because of some of the changes in the federal law, they're working now on trying to keep patients from having to go back into hospitals once they're discharged. And the Glendale Police Foundation Luncheon was just excellent. It's always inspiring to hear some of the stories and listen to the detectives and street cops and homicide detectives and everyone else. When they're given these commendations, they get into details as to what these people go through in the discharge of their duties and-
Should reenact them.
Very inspiring. The Volunteer of the Year and Reserve Officer, the Officer of the Year, Jeff Rivas. So anyway, very inspiring program. Also inspiring was the annual Adelante Latino's Lunch held at Glendale Community College, and that's run sort of started by Mary Boger, Kathy Montoro, who's a long-term teacher at the school district, and now currently it's also the President of the Glendale College Board, Anita Quinones Gabriellian, is involved, and of course, the Superintendent, Richard Sheehan. I also had the opportunity to have dinner at the Korean consulate along with some other elected officials from this area, and that was very, very informative. We have tens of thousands of Korean-Americans that live in Glendale, and so it was great to speak to some of the consulate execs. And then the actual ambassador, the Consul General, Mr. Shin, who previously served at the United Nations, has been a career diplomat, and it's very interesting talking to him. The Glendale Chamber event was well-attended, as Ms. Friedman mentioned, and I think that new location's going to work very well. And unfortunately, tonight, we are going to adjourn the City Council in memory of Carl Messick, who's a former mayor and consul member. He passed away a few days ago. He was a member of the Glendale City Council from '71 to '83. He served as mayor in '73, '74, and '74, '75. Prior to being elected on the council, he served for five years on the Parks and Recreation Commission. He was a commissioner at the Burbank Airport for many years and did a good job as he served on the commission. He was also instrumental in economic development activities in Glendale, and he was an executive at the YMCA for 27 years. So his family's requesting that donations be made in his name to the Glendale YMCA. That's all I have. Mr. Manukian.
Yes, I also attended the Armenian Bar Association's 23rd Annual National Meeting here at the Hilton. They held a conference here in Glendale. They usually hold conferences throughout the country. They're a national organization, they're an international organization, and I was pleased that they held their conference here in Glendale. A number of individuals from the East Coast and from San Francisco as well attended the event. There were, the event was very well-attended, a number of judges, very prominent attorneys. I also attended, and I want to, and they, it was a two-day conference. They also selected their new Board of Directors, and I wanted to mention and congratulate the Armenian Bar Association for their successful 23rd Annual National Meeting. Part of that, they've had meetings in New York, haven't they? New York and-
New York, Chicago, Paris, all over.
And I want to congratulate their new chairman, actually, who's a commissioner of the city of Glendale, is Civil Service Commissioner Gado Guzerian. So I want to congratulate him and congratulate the Armenian Bar Association for a very successful event. Thank you.
You. Any comments from the staff?
No, sir.
Okay, next, please.
At items 5A through D are consent items. They are routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before the motion is proposed.
Okay, I'm going to pull a number of the items. I'm going to pull 5B.
I'm sorry?
I'm going to pull 5B, and we will move that forward to next week. Then I have two cards on 5C, so we need to pull that. And then I'd like, 5C. And then I'd like to pull 5D, because I'd like to have the public understand what we're going to do at the two parks. I think it'd be a great, great project, so having pulled those items, do I have a motion for the rest of the consent? Second. That's all that's left, that's right. Okay, roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman. Yes? Manukian. Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes. Read 5C into the record.
5C.
5C.
At 5C, Director of Community Services and Parks regarding proposed Pacific Park Artificial Turf Project at Edison Elementary School and proposed Maple Park Site Improvements Project. At 5C1, is a motion authorizing execution of a professional services agreement with David Boltz Design Landscape Architects, Inc., in the amount of $90,196 and a 10% contingency of $9,020 for preparation of design and construction documents and construction administration for the Pacific Park Artificial Turf Project. At 5C2, is a motion authorizing execution of a professional services agreement with Narduli Studio in the amount of $139,015 and a 10% contingency of $13,900 for preparation of design and construction documents and construction administration for the Maple Park Site Improvement Projects.
I have two cards. Tony Passarella, followed by Herbert Milano.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers, staff, and viewing public. My name is Tony Passarella, 25-year resident of the city of Glendale, and I'll be very brief. I 100% support this project, this artificial turf project. Anything we can do for the children of the city to get them moving in an environment that's safe and healthy, so they can be active, and anything that'll get them away from those computer games will benefit them in a great way. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Herbert Milano.
Mayor Frank Quintero, members of the City Council and city staff, my name is Herbert Milano. I want to commend you for moving forward on this artificial turf project for Pacific Park. I think it is one of the highlights to me of the city cooperating with the Glendale Unified School District in creating the facilities that are needed for organized sports. Yesterday, I believe there was a report that I saw on television concerning the significant problem of obesity in children from elementary school through high school. And Glendale itself has exactly the same problem as evident by the Quality of Life Reports. It would have been nice to have displayed the particular problem that we have in Glendale, the reports that the city provided from a couple of years ago, and what you're doing about it. This is what I would call a good aligning of strategic objectives to the results, and I commend the City Council for moving along in this direction. But I believe that there's still a significant need to provide that type of quality playing surface. I'd like to give, if I could, an awareness of the need at Fremont Park. Fremont Park has all of these tennis courts that are really a great facility, but I think that there's a significant number of kids who are playing on the dirt and that need a significant amount of quality surface for them to play on. Anything that we can do to promote sport, particularly soccer, would really be ideal for the community overall, and this is a park that is in dire need of such a facility, and it is my hope that the city can find the funds, hopefully in the near future, to provide this type of resource for so many kids who are undeserved in this area. Thank you very much.
I am very happy that Pacific Park is going to undergo this change. I go by there quite often. Of course, everything is being used. Of course, everything is being used, the pool, but also the monkey bars, the basketball courts, in and out. The library is just a hub of activity. But that overused soccer field, I've seen it turn from beautiful green to nothing but mud and dirt, literally within, the last time we did it, I don't think it took, you know, six weeks and it was already showing heavy wear. So once this is down, that artificial turf is gonna last for such a long time. And I think both young kids and the adults that play there, everyone's really gonna enjoy it. Mr. Najarian?
I just want to be clear, because the PowerPoint that's attached highlights the, what I think is, the baseball field. And it's not the baseball field, it's the soccer field. It's now a compacted dirt dust bowl at times.
Correct.
Yes, Mayor Quintero, Councilmember Najarian, and council members, it's the multipurpose soccer field that we are replacing.
Okay.
I think those slides were just samples of work that the designer has done.
Which, by the way, I think would be an excellent Marine Corps infantry training zone, by the way, and that hard clay. That's exactly what you want. Could I have a motion?
I'll move the item.
Second. A roll call, please.
Councilmembers Friedman? Yes. Manukian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Quintero?
Yes. 5D, please.
Item 5D, Director of Community Services and Parks Regarding Park Safety Projects Consisting of Car Park Security Gates and Park Renovation Project in Connection with Specifications Number 3482 and Brand Park Entry and Security Gates in Connection with Specifications Number 3481. At 5D1 is a resolution adopting plans and Spec Number 3482 and directing the city clerk to advertise for bids. At 5D2 is a resolution adopting plans and specs for Spec Number 3481 and directing the city clerk to advertise for bids.
Mr. Teltavosian, can you let the public, are there any slides that we can show?
We don't have any slides at this point. Mayor Quintero and members of the council, we're happy to present this project to you for your consideration. We're excited to move forward with two of our projects that have been on our boards for a few months. Both of these projects are part of a larger effort to address security and safety issues at our current parks. Specifically, at Car Park, we'll be adding, both of these projects actually have CIP funding, and Car Park will be receiving CDBG funds as well. The CDBG funding will be used towards parkside improvements, improving some ADA compatibility, restroom improvements, some specific signage, an entry marker to the city at the front of the park. The CIP funding is strictly towards the safety and security improvements. We'll be adding cameras that will be connected to our police department camera system. We'll be doing some strategic tree pruning to provide more visibility through the park. And at the Brand Park, specifically at the Brand Park, we have had extensive coordination with the community up there to install gates at both entrances, at the east and the west entrance, along Mountain Avenue. And we have also worked with our maintenance staff to make sure that we have worked out the hours when the park needs to be closed and how the gates will help them provide additional security to the site.
What are the hours?
The park closes at 10:00 PM currently.
So that's when the gates will close?
That's when the gates will close, yeah. And we've also had a presentation to the Historic Preservation Commission, who enthusiastically approved the design of these projects.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm sorry, we don't have the slides. I think the Car Park gate specifically, or fence, I think is gonna look quite neat there.
When we come back, Mr. Mayor, when we come back for the actual award of the contract, we'll make sure that we have better slides to demonstrate the exciting project.
Mr. Najarian?
Just a question. Mr. Teltavosian, so on these gates, let's go to Brand Park. It's not completely enclosing the park. Is this only the driveway section that's gonna be preventing?
Well, if you recall, Councilmember Najarian, the park is enclosed currently. It has a gate, a pedestrian gate, and it has a gate at the eastern entrance. But we are augmenting that at the eastern entrance, making it more pronounced, and also adding a fence to the western entrance. Both of these are to prevent vehicular entrance to the site. But the park will be closed to the public, pedestrians as well, after 10 o'clock. So we'll be monitoring the park to make sure that when the gates are closed, there are no patrons using the park at that time.
So could, would this prevent pedestrian access as well?
Yes. Our parks are officially closed after 10:00 PM.
Yes.
And I know what the rules are, but, I mean, if a couple, the problem is kids getting out there, creating mischief, and mischief is a light term for it. So when these gates are closed, would that prevent them from entering absent scaling the fence to get in?
That's correct.
Okay.
Will there be cameras at Brand Park?
We are installing cameras at the entrance as well.
Okay, thank you very much.
I'll move the item D1 and 2.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman? Yes. Manukian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Quintero?
Yes. Next, please.
Item 6 are oral communications, and this will be the three-minute event announcement portion.
Right, Sharon Weisman followed by Don Biggs.
Mayor Quintero, council members and staff, and those listening, I'm Sharon Weisman from far north Glendale, and I'm here to tell you about a couple of events. First, tomorrow, Wednesday, May 23rd, starting at 6:30 PM, the Glendale Human Relations Coalition is hosting a screening of the DVD 10 Rules for Dealing with the Police, produced by Flex Your Rights.org. There will be a question-and-answer session following the 40-minute film. The presentation is at Pacific Park Community Center in the Sycamore Room, which is upstairs. The address is 501 South Pacific Avenue. It's free and open to the public. With summer rapidly approaching and budget restrictions causing cuts in programs serving youth, more young people will be out and about. We want to help educate all about their rights and how to calmly and safely deal with the police. It is our hope that this training will help young people avoid doing something foolish that may take police time away from focusing on the early-release parolees and other criminals. We'll have additional material, such as When You Become 18: Survival Guide for Teenagers from the California Bar Foundation and the ACLU's Pocket Guide to Police Encounters. Both publications are available in English and Spanish. Please let anyone know who may be interested in this opportunity, particularly young people. And I have some flyers you can share with the council. And the following night, Thursday, May 24th, starting at 7:00 PM, the Crescenta Valley Community Association meets at the La Crescenta County Library, 4521 La Crescenta Avenue at Foothill Boulevard. And City Manager Scott Ochoa will be our guest speaker. And this meeting is also free and open to the public. And this meeting room is on the upper level that you access the upper parking lot from La Crescenta Avenue. And we're interested in hearing about Mr. Ochoa's ideas on city government, and we want to share with him what's important to Crescenta Valley residents. Again, please share this invitation with anyone who may be interested. Thank you for your time.
Don Biggs followed by Leon Mayer.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, my name is Don Biggs, and I'm here tonight representing the Chamber of Commerce's Patriotism Committee, the planning group for the Memorial Day Program here at City Hall. The program is scheduled again this year after a change of, how would I say this, a change of leadership, a significant loss to us. But moving on, the program will start at 9:30 on Monday morning, the 28th of May. Our keynote speaker is Lieutenant Colonel Rafi Najarian. And we'll have the POW MIA program that Lieutenant Colonel Dave Worley does, as well as music from the Crescenta Valley Charismatics and a lot of other parts of the program, as we traditionally do and have done for many, many years. In addition to our program, I believe there's, I'm not part of the planning, but there's usually a program in La Crescenta at 8:00 in the morning, and then a program at Forest Lawn following our program at 11:00. So we're kind of in the middle of that. We ask everyone in the City of Glendale that would like to come to please come and join us at 9:30 on Monday morning. The program will commence right then and it'll last about an hour. So, unless there's any questions, thank you very much.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Biggs. You've been part of Leon Mayer and the program up in, it's actually Montreux Shopping Park Memorial Day in the morning. Montreux Shopping Park. Leon Mayer followed by Sandy Dodi and Liz Missari.
Good evening, Mayor Quintero, members of the council and staff. My name is Leon Mayer. I'm here, I'll be at the library and the Friends of the Library, and I'm giving you a heads-up on Thursday event. Thursday event is Horror is Our Business. And we're having three prominent authors from all over the country to talk about their business. And their business is vampires, werewolves, monsters, you name it, they have it.
I have a crowd now.
And there'll be a panel of them, and they'll be speaking. I might be moderating the panel. If I don't show up the following Tuesday, you know something happened to me. In any event, that'll be this Thursday, 7:00 at the library. Now, on the 31st, we're having a very important event called Mother of Jerusalem is Crying. And the author of that book is Rosemary Hartunian Cohen. It'll be May 31st, 7:00. There's some flyers available at the library. I have one left here. And that should be of interest, whether you're Christian, or Jewish, or Muslim, there's a lot of interest in this book and the subject matter of the book by Rosemary Hartunian Cohen. So come on May 31st, that's a week from Thursday, 7:00 again. Parking is validated at the library if you park at the structure across the street. Just looking ahead for a second, if I have a few seconds, June 20th, we're gonna have Gustavo Aralano. We had him a few years ago. We had the, the place was sold out, so to speak. He's a nationally-known radio commentator, journalist, and his book is Taco USA. And the subtitle is How Mexican Food Has Conquered America. And we've invited some big political leaders there to come here on that night so they can get some lessons or ideas about immigration problems we're having. But it's not gonna be a serious night, really. Gustavo Aralano is very clever, very personable, and that will be on June 17th, I believe, June 20th, 7:00 at the library. I still have some flyers. If anybody raises their hand, I'll give you some of the flyers we still have. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Sandy Dodi followed by Liz.
Good evening, Mayor Quintero, members of City Council and Glendale staff, city staff. My name is Sandy Doudy, and this is Liz Missari. And we are past Business Life Women Achievers. And tonight, we're here to tell you about an upcoming event that is happening in September. This is the Business Life Magazine, planning to salute the San Fernando Valley and San Gabriel Valley Women Achievers for 2012 at its 23rd Annual Women Achievers Event, scheduled for Thursday, September 27, from 8:30 to 1:30 at the Glendale Hilton. We're here to tell everyone to save the date, put it on your calendar, and also, this year, we are doing something new. We're allowing the community to nominate women achievers. You can get a nomination form on the website at women@businesslife.com. There is a deadline, and that is Monday, August 3rd. So if you have an outstanding women achiever that you would like to nominate, please go to the website and download the form. Highlighting the conference will be an inspirational luncheon honoring our women achievers. We're also, again, planning to offer a full morning schedule of free, career-themed workshops and seminars for all in the community who need a career boost. This year, we're focusing on careers. And we know that there's a lot of people, a lot of women in particular, who are out of work right now. The morning workshops and the luncheon will also be held at the Hilton in Glendale. Last year, the response from the community was overwhelming. The luncheon was sold out. If any of you were there, it was a packed room. And the morning workshops were extremely popular. We had some really great speakers, and we had a lot of booths for people to visit, and a lot of free information and material was distributed. So we'd love to have you come. This is a great networking, career-boosting, and inspirational day for women in our community. Men are also encouraged to attend. For more information about the event, sponsorship opportunities, display spaces, workshops, or nominations, contact women@businesslife.com or Business Life Magazine at 818-240-7088. We hope to see you all there. And Liz is going to leave some flyers here. Thank you.
You.
Item 8A is Director of Community Development Regarding Update on the Gate Glendale Area Temporary Exhibitions, Art in Vacant Storefronts Program. 8A1 is a motion directing staff to develop a program and funding options to continue the Gate program.
Mr. Ochoa?
Yes, sir. We have a brief overview and presentation regarding the evaluation, such as it is, for the Gate program. Glendale Area Temporary Exhibitions, as you know, this is a wonderful program that was introduced by council that seeks to add some interest to some of the vacant storefronts that we have. Net Vartanian will do the staff report for us.
Good evening, Mayor Quintero and members of the council. As Mr. Ochoa stated, the Gate program was developed by the former redevelopment agency to address the chronic vacancies that we had in the downtown area. The goals of the program were to address the blinding effect of empty spaces on neighboring businesses, promote the retenanting of buildings, enhance the pedestrian experience, introduce public art, and promote downtown Glendale. The agency chose to contract with Praxis to manage the program. Praxis has been responsible for overseeing the call for artists, curating the exhibitions in the spaces, curating with artists and property owners, which includes providing the insurance, filling out contracts, doing some of the permitting, as well as building out the, some of the displays. We've had a very successful year one of the program. We completed the program, $20,000 under budget. We were able to install 16 different exhibitions, which is about 13,000 square feet. And it's important to note that that's larger than the Santa Monica Museum of Art. So we were able to do this on a temporary basis. We're also able to re-tenant three spaces with long-term leases through this program, and that's equivalent to about 8,000 square feet. And we provided exhibition space for 42 artists, half of them Glendale artists. In addition, we had some opening events and art walks to encourage some activity in the downtown area. On average, these attracted 200 people to the downtown, and two events drew over 400 people to the downtown. Businesses in the area, including BJ's, CPK, and Olive Garden, all noted increased business on the days that we had these public receptions. Some of the artists and artist organizations volunteered and helped have community workshops and open gallery days, just so community members could come in and interact with the art and the artists. Well, this got the attention of the media. We've gotten a lot of great publicity for the program. People are saying good things about Glendale. They're talking about Glendale and the program. This also got the attention of Pasadena. Actually, their public art manager came to view some of our exhibition spaces because they'd like to do a similar program in Pasadena. And as I mentioned, we've had a really successful first year of the program. There's been a lot of synergy created within the community and throughout the Los Angeles area as a result of the program. And we have a lot of support from artists as well as property owners. property owners. For example, Legacy Partners, who owns and manages One-on-One North Brand, said as they were showing potential tenants the office spaces in the buildings, they actually saw, the tenants saw the ground floor installations as an asset. So this was helping entice some potential office tenants to sign leases with them, which I think is very successful. And with that, next steps, we're seeking council direction to continue the program. So, and if the council chooses to continue the program, staff can develop some program options and funding options using the Urban Art Program. We can then take that to the Arts and Culture Commission for their review and recommendation, and then we would bring it back to the council for your final vote and determination. That concludes my presentation. I'm available to answer questions, and so is Praxis, the consultant.
Yes, if you came in twenty thousand dollars under budget, what was the total budget that was?
We had budgeted eighty-three thousand. We spent sixty-three.
And where did those funds come from?
Redevelopment.
Were they redevelopment funds?
Yes, they were redevelopment funds.
And at this point, we're looking at the art fund to finance this project?
We're seeking council direction to do so.
Okay. And do we know how much money we have in the Urban Art Fund?
I have that information. We've collected nine hundred and seventy-five thousand. Sixteen thousand of that is committed for the Fire Art piece, and then we're also projecting to get an additional million dollars, and I've only calculated projects that are currently and plan-checked but have not pulled their building permits.
When we do the exhibits, do we pay rent for those office spaces?
No, we don't.
We don't? And what does the cost entail, basically?
The cost covers the consultant's time. The consultant also gets insurance so that we can enter the space, so that the property owner isn't liable, to build out some of the displays, the website for the program, some of the marketing we've done, and to get some of the materials.
What kind of consultant?
Their public art consultant, oh, where are they? Right behind me. So they help actually oversee the program. So they've managed the call for artists, going through all of the proposals and actually coming up with a professionally curated exhibit.
Were any of the artists, local artists from Glendale?
Yes, half of the artists were Glendale-affiliated artists.
Thank you very much. I, I thought it was a good presentation, just so I make, and I'm glad that you also gave us the results of your efforts, of the efforts of the program, in terms of number of square feet that were rented as a result of, as a result of these, these processes. This program as well as increase in traffic, foot traffic, and to the restaurants and the businesses in the downtown, so I'm pleased with it, so, thank you.
Ms. Friedman.
I know that the consultants are going to speak, and I just wanted to maybe preempt them a little bit by saying that I had had a conversation with them, and I think that they have some ideas of even making this more cost-efficient, which I think we should explore. And I'd love to hear when they come up. They also had ideas of moving this forward, you know, not just doing it the same way that was done last year, but learning from the experience and improving on what they had done. So I just, it's my message to them to please be sure that you express that to the council when you come up to speak.
And, and it's going to go through the Art and Culture Commission for input as well?
Correct.
They actually filled out the cards and said they would answer questions as required, so we're going to bring you.
What is the weather going to be like tomorrow?
Please come, I have two cards. Eric Cavall and Cletus Daglish.
Council, very pleased to be here. Thank you very much for the presentation. The year of producing exhibitions for the city of Glendale under the Gate program was a very rewarding process, especially because of the coming together of very different communities of the city council, property owners, and artists in the, in the community, because each looked at this opportunity in very different ways. And so finding a way that everyone saw a real benefit for their interests was one of the things we were most, most proud of. We were able to produce sixteen exhibitions in the course of one year. In the realm of art exhibitions and planning, that's pretty outrageous, considering generally it's nice to have two years to plan one exhibition. So, one of the things-
We like outrage in Glendale.
So to be able to produce a set of, of successful programs in that time and within budget was, was very satisfying. And it was also something that we did very much looking forward, and in creating the name even of Gate, Glendale Area Temporary Exhibitions, we really hoped that in the first year, we would be able to make an impression, would be able to make an impact, that people in the city of Glendale, walking, seeing the Gate logo on, on something, then seeing it again, would start to put two and two together, as well as people coming from outside of the community, would start to see, ah, this is a program that supports the arts, that emphasizes that central Glendale is an arts and culture hub, and that that would have some lasting benefit going forward. We certainly do find that word has gotten out. We looked at over two hundred artists' applications in the process of, of going through this, and I know for certain that now that it's actually been done, that people have been talking to each other, that we could expect a lot of attention and really excellent professional quality applications for this kind of an opportunity. Councilman Friedman asked us to mention some of the thoughts we had going forward. One of the things that is very important in developing programs like this is a certain kind of continuity, and we also realize that funding is always an issue in a city. One of the things we did at the very beginning of this program was to work with the Glendale Library to produce a project that would actually educate local artists about how to, how to work professionally, how to present themselves, how to be successful in their, in their career. And one thought we have going forward is to create a continued working relationship so that if we can present the fact to, to funding organizations, that the city of Glendale has a successful program, we have demonstrated benefits, and we have partners in the nonprofit area that we can begin to, to bring in other funding sources. One of the things specifically that we pointed to in that is that continuing from right now, that will take probably a year to be able to demonstrate and get any kind of grant funding. It would be a very meaningful thing, if it were possible, for the council, based on the program as we've seen it, to look ahead and create a projection of three years to have a diminishing funding, but also to be able to demonstrate to, to grant organizations that the city of Glendale does see the value in this program, and that support in itself would communicate that outside funding organizations might be interested in this, especially if we can begin to emphasize a sort of cross-linking of this kind of program with it also providing an educational resource, which I think would be a very strong message to send.
We need your name for the record.
Oh, and I'm, I'm Cletus Daglish Schomer.
Hello, council, mayor, Eric Cavalli, also with, with Praxis. And just to add what, what Cletus was discussing, you know, initially when this project came about, we were extremely interested at the opportunity, and it was a competitive selection process through the redevelopment agency. There were numerous organizations that had applied to manage this program, and I think one of the things that really went to our benefit was from really the onset, from the first beginning of this project, we'd looked at it as just a stepping stone, that everything that we were doing was, there's this amazing big picture that we could create out of this. And initially, if you actually read the scope of work from when we began, it didn't include public events. It didn't include workshops with artists. This program was initially designed for was to do enhancements to vacant properties, which we think was a very important thing to do, but we really wanted to extend this beyond and, and look at how to interact with the public, how to bring artists together that would really create these sort of community events, and how to bring these different communities together, which was the developers, which was the, the local government and, and the, and the public. And one of the things that I think was so enticing to us is the redevelopment's efforts to create an arts and entertainment district in this area, and I, we saw it as extremely beneficial and a wonderful opportunity. And as Cletus was mentioning, funding-wise, you know, there is a great amount of opportunity to continue that and to work with this as a stepping stone and to move into possible grants, bring other cultural institutions into the process to see if they may be interested. Satellite galleries, I know that there was quite a bit of discussion with some of the major cultural institutions to come to Glendale and provide services, collaborative-type efforts and such, and so, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'll move the other gentleman.
Well, I just have some, some comments. I think the, and you can have a seat, gentlemen, they're not really questions of you. I think this was a great project last year when we had redevelopment money. I, I think we really have to reassess where this is going to go without that, without those redevelopment funds. Someone mentioned, oh, we've got our art fund. Well, I, I envision that art fund to fund permanent artwork that will last for years and decades in the city, not something that would fund a temporary art exhibit. So that's my issue. I think we're, we're cutting back in every apartment, and now that the gentlemen are talking about not just one year, but let's look three years in advance at eighty thousand, which was their budget, they came in twenty, under budget, sixty thousand dollars, I think is still a significant amount. Then, you know, the assertion is that it has helped lease space in, in some of the buildings. I don't know, that's a pretty strong statement to make. Is that, I mean, does staff really think that, that it was a contributing factor or led to leasing? Because I've looked for space when I go out, I ask what their lease rate is and how many parking spots there are and how late the building is open. So do you think this led to leasing of empty space?
Well, I've included a testimonial in the staff report. I can read it for you if you'd like, but the property located at One-on-One North Brand, which is owned and managed by Legacy Partners, did say that they saw an increase in both the retail tenant leasing and office tenant leasing as a result of the programs. The prospective tenants did note that this was an asset and a draw for them.
I would say Legacy Partners funded it then. If we're contributing to their, the leasing of their spaces, they pay brokers who show space. If it is, if it is such a benefit as they claim, they're getting certainly the benefit that we're extending to them, so. I mean, to me, it's really just about funding. This was a great project when we had a redevelopment agency with excess disposable income for these sort of things, but I think it's a real, in a tight budget, when we're going to all the other departments, we're laying off employees, potentially, potentially. Other events like Cruz Night are getting sliced significantly. I just, I would hate to dip into our art fund, which I can't speak for the other council members, but I envision that as being permanent art, more or less of the capital improvement type of comparison versus maintenance and operations that we do in our budget process. So, if the, if the item before us is to seek ways to fund this, I have no objection to seeking ways to fund this. I would like to emphasize that one of the gentlemen discussed seeking other sources of funding. I think that would be very good. Perhaps if the BID gets on its way downtown, that may be a great source of funding. Individual property owners who are given essentially museums of art on their first floor, it may very well be attracting tenants, but I think they have to share in some of the, share in the game with us. I know legacy, a building such as Legacy Partners and a corporation such as Legacy Partners has perhaps a significant amount of resources to help develop this sort of thing and partner with us, so those are just my thoughts.
Okay, I'm in total support of the program. I think it's done a wonderful job. I've actually interacted with a person from Long Beach and someone from Culver City that heard, or one of them knew me, one's an elected official, but anyway, they had, they came to Glendale for one of the sort of shows and talked about it. I think it's doing a wonderful job. I'm prepared to fund it one more year out of the art fund. I do agree with Ms. Najarian, though, the art fund, to me, the largest overwhelming percentage of that money, in my opinion, should go towards permanent art projects, whether they're in the downtown and maybe the nexus is that we have to spend the money within, within the downtown area, I'm not sure, or whether they're spread throughout, no, they're not? Okay, well, then even better. In the downtown and spread throughout the rest of the city. So that's where I'd like to see the rest of, or the bulk of the money go. However, I think this program is excellent, and like I say, I'm prepared to fund it. I think the consultants are absolutely right in terms of trying to get some grants and so forth, have it continue, but I think it's done a, it's done a great job. Ms. Friedman?
I'm very much in support of the project, no surprise. I understand Ms. Najarian's concerns, but I just want to remind people and be very clear that no one's suggesting taking any money out of the general fund for this, so employee layoffs, budget issues, that's not, that's very, that's very much separate from this, because we do have an urban art fund with over eight hundred thousand dollars in it at this point, and hopefully that fund will grow, and that money has to be used. It's restricted and can only be used for, for art projects. In terms of permanent art projects versus not permanent, I think you need a balance. I look at some of our permanent art projects, and some of them are very nice, and then you've got Ben Franklin sitting in the Exchange. Is that a public, was that one of our public art funds or was that public art projects or was that?
That's probably-
But you could easily, that easily could have been the kind of thing that money has gone to. The giant white faces at City Center, not every permanent, you know, I think you have to kind of look at projects as they go, and having changing, dynamic projects bring a kind of excitement to a downtown. When I think about the public art that's funded from the exact same type of fund in down, in Los Angeles that I know of, I think of the art walk that they have, the performances on Grand Avenue, the Grand Avenue performances. I mean, none of those are permanent exhibits, but they're the only art exhibits that I know, that I can think of that are funded with that type of redevelopment funding, of public art funding, that I know of. So, you know, I can't remember ever driving to see a statue in the downtown that was funded through that kind of mechanism, but I have gone to those sorts of non-permanent performance-type events, and that's what's bringing people here to Glendale. And I think that we're getting, if we're getting four hundred people to an opening on the first year of a project, that's only going to grow, especially since the exhibits are very dynamic, very interesting. And most importantly, this is reducing blight in our downtown, and whether it benefits one property owner or not, it really benefits the entire downtown, because there's nothing worse than having a vacant storefront, especially at night when you have, you're trying to get people to walk up and down Brand. And we have a problem now where people aren't necessarily leaving the Americana Galleria area and walking up the north part of Brand Avenue, and if you have a bunch of vacant windows that are dark, you're definitely going to increase that problem. But what this project's done is it's made those, those spaces not only be lit and alive, but really a draw. And one of my favorite things when we were doing this project was, and I saw this a lot, would be driving down Brand at night, let's say it's ten o'clock at night, and a lot of the businesses are closed, you know, some of the lights are on, but I'd see people walking, and it's more than once, I saw people walking down the street and stopping and walking over to one of the windows that had the Gate project inside of it and looking and saying, my goodness, what is this? Here's something completely unexpected. Here's a piece of art that's, you know, it's engaging me and I'm interested, and I saw that a lot, and that's what made me the most excited, when I would see that happen, because we're offering people not just a retail experience, not just a restaurant experience, but we're offering them an aesthetic experience, and there's not a lot of that right now in our downtown, and this really brought that here. So, yes, explore those funding options. I completely understand, though, that in order to get those funds, sometimes you have to show support from a city or from another entity, and I'm hoping that you can leverage that support. Now, in terms of what the budget is this year, I'm open to that. I'd like to hear what the commission has to say, what Praxis thinks they realistically need, how much money is really out there, what grants are really out there that they can leverage our commitment against, because that's going to be very important going forward. But I do support, you know, bringing this to the Arts Commission and taking it to the next step. I think they did a very good job, and hopefully we won't have a lot of vacant storefronts. Maybe they're, you know, it'll all kind of dry up over time, and we, we won't need them because we just won't have anything left, but I love the idea of the workshops for the artists. I know we had some community artist groups who came in who expressed, you know, just, they were so happy that they had a place in the downtown to display their arts and their crafts, and so hopefully we can even have more of that, you know, Glendale- their crafts, and so hopefully we can even have more of that, you know, Glendale groups doing displays and have that kind of balance, but I support moving forward. Thank you.
And I'd just like to ask for some information next week or whenever. With regard to the language concerning the collection of funds for the art fund, whether, what restrictions, if any, are placed on that? Does it have to be capital? Can it be operations? What geographic location? Can it be used to fund the Museum of Neon Art, for example? What we decide, what our actual, the four corners of our written document was regarding the use of it?
I will happily provide the language for you, but I can give you a short answer that we actually did not put a lot of restrictions so that the council would have the opportunity to decide on the, at a policy level at a future time, and, but I will be providing that language for all of the council through the city manager.
Motion, hold on a minute. Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman?
Yes.
Manoukian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Aide.
Mayor Cantaro?
Yes. Next, please.
We are at item six, are the oral communications. This is following the business agenda. Discussion is limited to items not a part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. The city manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report.
Bill Weisman, followed by MZ Vizi III Esquire.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, city staff, and the public. My name is Bill Weisman from far north Glendale, and I'm going to do a first tonight that I've never done before, a PowerPoint. And what I wanted to talk about was the solar photovoltaic system that we started installing on our house last fall, that has now been up and running since early in the year, and we've had a lot of bad news lately, so I thought maybe I'd come by with some good news. When we decided to put solar panels on our house, we actually had several companies turn us down, and the reason was trees. We have several hundred-foot-tall pine trees on our property. That's one of them right there, and there's another one. And because of the fact that a standard solar installation, you can't really have shadows falling on your solar panels, or it cuts way down on the output, and that's actually been changed now because of new technology. And luckily, we found a company, Fat Energy, in La Cressenta, that was able to work with us using some of this new technology, which utilizes microinverters, and that allows us to put solar panels in different locations, on our garage roof and on our house roof, to avoid problems with shading from the trees, because the trees give us a lot of shade in summertime, especially in the front of our house. You can kind of see in the lower part of this picture, we also had our roof redone before we had the solar panels installed. We installed a product called Polar Ply, which is insulated solid sheathing, and on top of that, we installed Energy Star reflective shingles to try and get our energy usage and our, our heat situation down as much as possible. What you see here is the racking system on the front of our garage that the solar panels would be mounted on, and you can see little aluminum boxes. Those are actually the microinverters. There's one microinverter for each solar panel, and the microinverters convert DC voltage to AC voltage. So instead of having high-voltage DC wiring on the roof, which can be somewhat dangerous, it's actually standard AC voltage, two hundred and forty volts, that can go straight into your service panel. And here's what it looks like with the solar panels on it. These are the only panels actually that are available, excuse me, that are visible from the street. The rest of the panels are on the back of the garage roof, in the back of the house, so it's only these five that actually face east and catch most of the morning sun. The main solar panel array is actually on the back of our house, so only a couple of our neighbors can see it, this most, especially the neighbor uphill from us. And again, you have a racking system here, and there is a separate microinverter for each solar panel. And here's what the main array looks like on the back of the house, and again, this isn't visible at all from the street. Now, the solar panels actually communicate with this little device, which is a little self-contained computer, it's about yay big, and the solar panels communicate with this computer through the actual household AC wiring, and there's also a wireless connection that connects to our home network, which is how it attaches to the internet. And so you can actually log into this little computer, and it will show you statistics on all of the solar panels. There is also a website maintained by Enphase, the company that makes the microinverters, and it actually tells you in real time what your production is. It shows you a graphic of your solar panels and how much power each one's producing. And it also charts how much power you're producing, and you can get, you know, twenty-four hours, or four weeks, or twelve months, or whatever kind of display you want, and at the bottom, it shows the environmental benefits in terms of the megawatt-hours of electricity that you've produced through the year and how much carbon that you have offset. Our latest bill from GWP, I've been graphing our electricity usage since March of two thousand and eight, eighty kilowatt-hours, a little over thirty dollars is what we were charged. And Glendale Water and Power has the O Power website, so we know we've used eighty-nine percent less electricity than efficient similar homes. We can track our usage online, and it's been going down precipitously, and compare, we can compare to the same time last year, and we've saved quite a bit of money. And last but not least, something that not too many people have seen, this is what a smart meter looks like when it's running backwards. The little LCD arrow is pointing to the left instead of to the right. So for people that think that smart meters don't work in net metering mode for solar, they absolutely do, and I wanted to close by thanking our council members who voted to approve the subsidies that made it feasible financially for us to do this project and for GWP to help us become an electricity generating facility for the city of Glendale. Thank you.
And are you selling the electricity to GWP?
Any electricity in excess of what we don't use just goes out onto the grid for our neighbors to use, and so GWP is selling it, I'm not really selling it. We, we can get down to zero with a net meter, but I'm not going to, we're not ever going to be getting checks from, from GWP. And we have a five-and-a-half-kilowatt facility, and hopefully by the, in the middle of the summer, when it's operating at close to a hundred percent efficiency, our electric bill should be zero dollars. Thank you.
Thank you very much. MZ Vizi, followed by Tony Passarella.
How much time do I have?
Five minutes for oral communications.
All right, thank you. Non-miculator, MZ Vizi. I am MZ Vizi III Esquire. Okay. I've listened, I've checked from time to time, warned you, see how you're doing, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. All right. The first thing I need to say is this. Thinking and behavior that tends to be widespread actually needs to be stopped so that programming and progress can move forward. All right? There are too many obstacles or dams, whatever you want to say, that are there. Before I get to what I, oh, yeah, audience, it's nice to see you, those who do appreciate me. Tell others that I've been speaking tonight, so they may watch this later on, even though they had to wait much longer for this. Now, when it comes for, if you want to say the kids or whatever else, from elementary through high school, we could even push it into college, all right? I don't want the city to do it itself. However, the city can be an initiator for a kid's science center. All right, now, Carl Rajio, one of your former people at the Jet Propulsion Lab is in Grand Junction, Colorado, and they have a science center there for young people, to encourage them in the sciences. I know Glendale should have been doing that decades ago, but it didn't. All right? But one of Carl Rajio's, all right, former coworkers, he's at St. Barnes Episcopal Church in Grand Junction, Colorado, but they're doing it there. All right? Glendale can do it here. All right, now, the next thing, perhaps you should check out a little bit more about how safe the buildings are and see if the builders and architects didn't cheat you in different ways. All right? We know that there's a neighboring city that had a particular problem, especially with one of its buildings. Actually, a lot of employees, when I was told about more of the problems, were in great health danger, et cetera, et cetera. All right? But to really check out the buildings would be very important. I mean, hey, at times you use substandard materials, et cetera, et cetera. All right, now, another thing is that, all right, you have an old folks population here. If I remember correctly, while I was in Colorado, it was about twenty-something percent or something like that, it was just under twenty-five or whatever, you know, all right, but at least it's double digits, all right, when it comes to percentages. All right, look, we know that that's going to get higher, right? Can I get an agreement, at least from the audience? And I'm talking about people in TV land. Well, what? And hey, look, yes, I haven't been around, so I mean, some of you can growl at me. However, what are you really doing in terms of the future? See, because that's economic opportunity, that's business opportunity, all right, in terms of geriatric industry. All right? And what is this city doing to encourage? I'm not asking the city to spend its money, I'm asking others to spend their money. Stop bleeding off the city. All right? Two, begin to take care of that future and begin to deal with it now. Now, we do have paradigms across America that have taken care of the elderly in many ways, and also have taken care of populations at large that were not elderly. I'm thinking of one back in Westchester County called the Wachburg. Now, some of its chronology is wrong, and I know it's wrong, all right? However, it's been in business on one side to help out the elderly for, I think it's about maybe a hundred and thirty-two years or so. All right? So I'm asking you to do that encouragement, also out there to do that. Now, when it also comes, and we're talking about business formation, we're talking about creating jobs, remember that will still tend to be what? Labor-intensive, even though it will be knowledge-intensive, too, because you have to use a lot of people to take care of other people. It's not machines. Okay, now, all right, I'm done.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, and have a very nice evening. Ciao now.
Tony Passarella, followed by Harry Zavos.
Good evening again, Mayor, council members, staff, and viewing public. My name is Tony Passarella. I want to bring to you the water fluoridation issue again tonight. I want to read some commentary for you. Ingesting artificial fluoride chemicals does not prevent tooth decay, but rather destroys your insides and leads to the development of cancer and other illnesses. These are the disturbing findings of an assessment recently compiled by award-winning chemist and founder of the People's Chemist Network, Shane Ellison. Fluoride has never been shown to actually prevent cavities, which is the excuse most often used to continue lacing public water supplies with this toxic poison. On the contrary, fluoride ingestion actually promotes tooth decay, and even the U.S. Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, CDC, admits that there is no verifiable scientific proof that fluoride in any way prevents cavities. So why does artificial water fluoridation continue to persist in many towns and cities across America today, including our city? A combination of ignorance and pride both appear to be factors as a medical establishment largely refuses to accept modern science showing, showing that fluoride is unsafe because it has been claiming, because it has been claiming for many decades that fluoride is safe. The evidence is so strong that fluoride, against fluoride these days, that nearly forty U.S. communities stopped fluoridating water in two thousand and eleven, and many more in two thousand and twelve. So if that's the case, we have to ask ourselves, people, we have to use our common sense and say, they once had it in the water, and now they're taking it out. So why is that? I want to encourage the viewing public to do your research, please. Get this book by Dr. Paul Connet. It's titled, let me find it here, The Case Against Fluoride by Dr. Paul Connet. Please, if council members, mayor, and the viewing public, please get this. Can't we revisit this sometime in the future? I mean, I don't know who was on council when this was approved, I think it was back in two oh seven, but can't we revisit this? I mean, if, let's get to the truth. I mean, I'm, I'm all about seeking the truth. If it is not beneficial, and in fact, it is a hazard, then let's find out. I mean, let's get to the truth, let's all do our research, bring it back, revisit this thing, and remove it. If it's a hazard, let's get it out. I mean, other cities are, why, why can't we get it out of our water? You know, we can't, people, we can't allow ourselves to be indoctrinated with some of this stuff. There's a lot of injustices done to the American public, has been and currently are, and water fluoridation is one of those. Public, don't allow yourselves to be indoctrinated. Just because they say it's good doesn't mean it is. Do your own independent research, come to your own conclusion. Let's get this stuff out of our water supply if it's not good. Listen, if the Creator wanted this chemical in our water, don't you think He would have put it in there in the first place? Does that make any sense to anybody? I want to read a scripture verse to you, Isaiah thirteen eleven. "I will punish the world for its evil, the wicked for their sins. I will put an end to the arrogance of the haughty, and will humble the pride of the ruthless." Thank you for your time, my name is Tony Passarella.
Councilman, my name is Harry Zavos, and last week I came to speak to you about a GWP electrical rate increase in its formative stages, and to indicate a rate increase that GWP has indicated is necessary if critical capital improvements are not to be deferred. I made the case that under Article thirteen C of the California Constitution, any such rate change would have to be put to a vote of the people. Let me review that case. Article thirteen C mandates, and now I read from the Constitution, "No local government may impose, extend, or increase any special tax unless and until that tax is submitted to the electorate and approved by a two-thirds vote." And it goes on to define a special tax as any tax imposed for specific purposes. Now, granted, an electrical tax, or an electrical fee, is imposed for the specific purpose of providing the ratepayers with electricity. The question is, is it a tax within the meaning of Article thirteen C? And Article thirteen C... And Article 13(c) defines tax broadly enough to include an electrical charge. And again, I read from the California Constitution, Article 13(c). Tax means any levy, charge, or extraction of any kind imposed by local government, except the following. It goes on to list seven exceptions. Only exception two could conceivably apply to electric rates. And let me read that to you. "A charge imposed for a specific governmental service or product provided directly to the payer." So far, so good. That would seem to fit an electrical rate. But it goes on and makes two requirements. Let me read again. "A charge imposed for a specific governmental service or product provided directly to the payer that one is not provided to those not charged, and two, which does not exceed the reasonable costs to the local government of providing the service or product." Electrical rates can't meet any of those two requirements. We know that GWP, free of charge, provides all the electrical power for the city's street and traffic lights, a general fund obligation, which makes those electricity available to the public at large. It can't meet the second requirement, because we know that annually, the city transfers approximately $21 million of electrical fees to the general fund, where they do absolutely nothing and contribute in no way to providing electricity. That sum, which comes close to paying for all of those needed critical improvements, if retained by GWP, would obviate the need for any tax or any rate increase. Now, having made a serious case for a vote on any change in electrical rates, I indicated the hope that the council would request of the city attorney a formal legal opinion on the issue. I received no response. So tonight, I publicly asked the council to request of the city attorney such a formal legal opinion, and I asked them to make it available to the public in plenty of time for the public to be able to adequately study it before you entertain such an increase. Now, I make this request publicly, and I believe that the public has every right to hear from the council as to whether or not they will make that request of the city attorney.
Mike Mohill, followed by Herbert Milano.
Good evening, Mayor Quintero, council members, and the viewing audience. My name is Mike Mohill. Tonight, I want to give a speech that I've given before, before the council about a man by name of Corporal Maxton, a man who I never met, who died serving his country in Vietnam. I titled my speech Memorial Day Celebration, dated May 13 in the year 2010. I rarely speak publicly about my military experience in Vietnam, because I feel lucky to be one of the soldiers who returned home in one piece and in sound mind. I was in my early twenties, naive and fresh out of college, when I volunteered for the Army. The politician called Vietnam a conflict, but to the soldiers on the ground, it was war. When talking about war, I would say to my family and friends, I was a lover and never, never a soldier. When I was discharged, there was no military parade for me and my comrades in arms, as it was just best to blend into society and move on with one's life. I was one of the lucky ones who were able to make the transition. I knew, on the other hand, there were many, many soldiers came home with limbs gone, drug addicted, and brokenhearted. About two years ago, I visited the Veterans Hospital in the Valley. I saw an establishment that made me want to cry, acres of rundown buildings and landscaping. The complex was old, and because of politics and government neglect, remained how lucky I was to have been able to transition to civilian life and live comfortably. At the VA Hospital were hundreds of people with serious problems, unlike me, being pushed around in wheelchairs, crutches, and sadness in their eyes. Why wasn't this country honoring these heroes, and I mean heroes, with an environment that was new and cheerful and not old and neglected? Last month in the newspaper, I read where the city of Burbank was honoring a local hero by, by dedicating a city park in his honor. Corporal Larry Leonard Maxim had received the Congressional Medal of Honor for heroism while serving in Vietnam. I never knew Corporal Maxim, but I did something I had never done before. I got involved. I went to Pacific Park, and I became one person in a crowd of hundreds, honoring an individual that I had never, never knew. As Memorial Day is just around the corner, I am reminded every Tuesday evening how lucky I am to be able to appear before my city council and staff and tell the members how I feel on different issues. The other evening was no different for me, and I am sure for the thousands of other citizens throughout our country doing the same thing. I'm sure for the thousands of citizens throughout the country doing the same thing. We now live, excuse me, okay, doing the same thing, I should get last my place here. We know we live in democracy where we, we would not be put in jail, excuse me, for not agreeing with our elected officials. I approached the Speaker's, Speaker's eye, and I looked at each one of my councilmen, Mr. Najarian and Mrs. Friedman, who was very rude right now. Thank you. We're honoring a man right now. Thank you, ma'am. I remind our council members how lucky we are for all the Corporal Maxtons who gave their lives so we could all be free and disagree. This Memorial Day, I would be honored, Councilman Najarian and Freeman, if the good citizens of Glendale pause for just one moment and say a prayer for all the Corporal Maxtons who you laugh about, Mr. Najarian, because you've never served, but you talk about your cousin who was a servant in Vietnam in the 60s, and you said, because your family served in the service, that that was your way of serving. Yes, you did, don't you remember, sir?
Come to Memorial Day, you'll hear my brother speaking. He's part of my family, Mr. Mohill.
I know, but you never served, sir.
I'm proud of that.
You never served.
I wasn't drafted, Mr. Mohill.
Yes, but why don't you talk about it? You want to give veteran benefits. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. I am happy we are able to speak in a living, free country despite all its warts and shortcomings. Thank you. My name is Mike Mohill.
Herbert Milano, and the final card, I can't read the last name, Seda, and it's a little misspelled, Seda, the speaker.
Good evening, Mayor Quintero, members of the city council, city manager and staff. My name is Herbert Milano. Today, you had an item on the agenda, item 5b, that you moved for next week. This is an item that establishes a classification for the Assistant Director of Public Works. As I was reading through that document that justified this particular new position, I asked myself if I could, given the information that was in the packet, whether I could make a decision similar to the ones that you're about to make next week, to approve it. So I have several questions that I'd like to ask. I'd like to know if there is sufficient information to evaluate the need for the position, and if there is a sufficient justification for the pay structure and its impact on the budget. Among the questions that I had is, if this is a new position, then why is it needed now, and why wasn't it needed in the last five years? If I understand correctly, that Public Works no longer has the Building and Safety Section, that it's moved to a Community Development, now the department is smaller, so I wondered if that is still a point to be considered in justifying this position. I wonder if, if management positions should still maintain, especially the director and assistant director, should still be maintained as civil service? Why not put them as contractual, contractual arrangements, such that you could have after four years and a full evaluation of their performance, so they could be held accountable to tangible objectives as you would have laid out in the strategic plan? Should the city council receive an organizational chart, so that at least you can get a chance to review and find out why the position is needed in the different levels of supervision that this position will undertake? Some of that information is on the document, but it doesn't really picture it with regard to the level of impact that it will have on the department. I would like to know if there is a clear justification for continuing to maintain the eight different salary steps that this position entails. I believe that there is a significant amount of structural inflexibility on positions that really should be accountable to clear objectives that the city council and the city manager defines. By having a management association that sets these particular structural limits or entitlements, it removes a significant amount of your flexibility that you would have in making individuals accountable. For example, are they reducing sufficiently within their business unit the number of workers' compensation claims? Are these managers held accountable to some type of objective? A couple of years ago, workers' compensation claims, along with disabilities, was $16 million of the city's budget. But I don't think I have ever heard anyone being held accountable to a performance on that issue, and that is a significant number. In the city's central library, by the way, where, as you walk in towards your left, near the reference desk, there is a section where you find all of the city budgets and the cities, some of the city coffers. But down below on the lower-hand side, there is a set of books in red, hardbound, that the city purchases. It's called the Municipal Yearbook. It is subtitled Local Government Issues, Trends, Facts, Resources. It's available for all of you to take a look at, because it gives you comparative evaluations of the same positions throughout other cities, including every single city in California. I have looked at that book several times and noticed that oftentimes, when I look at just position by position, invariably Glendale's positions pay more, and thus not counting the significant amount that the city pays with regard to its benefits. I believe that part of the transparency should include a comparison using that particular text, document, as well as a full disclosure of what the full year's salary plus all of the benefits could entail. What is the impact on the city? I'm simply asking the questions, because I don't believe that they appeared properly in the document that you've received that was included in today's packet. I'm not saying that the position is not necessary, I'm simply stating that this particular position does not appear to be fully justified from the information that is being provided for you. Thank you very much.
Seda. We need your first name and your last name. Your first name and your last.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, my name is Seda Garakani. And I here speak about, you know, a case which is very important, and it is stalking case. I spoke to Mr. Najarian's assistant, I believe, about two months ago, and I, you know, explained some of the situation, which is very hard and very strange, but we experienced it. It is about four years that has passed, but this matter has not been resolved. I was living with my parents on 1435 Barrington Way, apartment number A. They were living there for 10 years and a half, and I joined them because they needed a care provider at that time. So part-time, with very, you know, short hours, I was a, I was their care provider. And then a couple moved in, actually an American couple, and my parents were in the middle of the building, which was only three apartments. We were in the middle, and there was no other floor or anything, it was, you know, on, on the ground, all of them. And this couple, they moved to apartment, I believe, C, in front, which was on the street. And his name was Lance Price with his girlfriend, Julie Lynn Murray. One night, my father came back, it was 10:30 or so, and then he was tired, and they knocked on the door, they, they moved, and they, they moved at that time, and they knocked on the door pretty hard, and I just, my father told me, please, just with, with the palm of your hand, knock it back, that they understand it is not right. It was pretty strong. And when I did it, they started stalking, they were following me, they were, you know, creating some parties, drinking and throwing things, and it was very hard. We, we didn't say anything, we ignored. And it came to the, to the point where I moved to 1108 East California. I rented a one-bedroom apartment, and I lived there by myself, and my parents stayed there. They came after me. You can't believe it, they sandwiched us there, as I said, our apartment was in the middle, you know, the one on the left and the one on the right. They brought their friends, even another couple on the left side, on our right side, so they could sandwich us between them. And then they called a couple of times the police, you know, it was Officer Lazarega or someone, you know, to pressure us, to give us hard time. Officer told me, leave, and so, and I said, okay, officer, but I hope this matter is going to end. When I moved again, Officer Lazarega came there and said that there is some, you know, complaint, and so, because you speak. And I said, frankly, I am an activist. I have received, you know, a letter of recommendation from the city of Glendale, because I work for homeless. I have volunteered numerous, you know, hours and time. I know what I'm talking about, I never bothered anyone, my parents never bothered anyone, but these people are stalking us big time, and I believe they sent you here. They started to follow me there, you know, they were, they brought cars on the street, because that apartment also was on the street, it was on the floor, one-bedroom house. They were standing there 4:00 a.m., doot, doot, I mean, using the car's remote, beep, 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 and again, they had friends in Federal Express and, you know, UPS. I was awaking, you know, anytime to go to the kitchen or do something, the Federal Express, 5:00 a.m., 4:00 a.m., was standing there, the UPS was standing there, they were following me. I was going to pay my bills or going to my parents' house, they were following me. And then they started to use the city resources, which was the trash trucks, to, you know, bring other people's, the metal trash, what is that, the trailer, to, you know, empty in front of my building, which it didn't have those metal trash trailers. You know, they started, dram, drum, raiding two, three cars together. The owner of the place that I was living died, Mr. Oscar Rudy. He died, and his wife before him, two, three months or four months before, she, you know, because ran, she just fractured her, you know, her bone. And it was, the, the sounds were very loud, the fire was coming, the police was coming every five minutes, baboo, baboo, they had the police radio, because they had friends in the police department, using the police radio, I don't know, 20, 25 times a day. The police told us, sir, just two minutes. We moved to 125 North Cedar Street, apartment 205, because with motorcycle there in Barrington, they came with motorcycle, and in front of my father's house, he had a fall, and he told me, come, that we lived together in Cedar, so I could take care of him. They came after us there, and you know, they sold the house adjacent to us in order to stalk us, you know, they paid, they made their terrorist movement in 135 apartment number seven, they were not living there, only stalking us.
Your five minutes, Rob.
With the smoke detector, you know, the remote, with the car remote.
You can talk to, you can talk to the.
I'm sorry, just one moment.
You can talk to the, no, no, no.
Every morning, 4:00 a.m., they were throwing this.
Okay, that's enough. We can't give you more than five minutes. You can speak to this gentleman here and give him the information, and he can talk to you and see if he can find something.
The manager of this house, Jean Hannah, does that with her husband, you know, follows them, to help them.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you.
So it is very disturbing. I thank you very much. I'm tired of it.
Thank you very much. Okay, any comments? Mr. Manukian?
The legality of the imminent proposal to increase electrical rates is, I think it's very important. And I don't want to see the same thing happen that happened with the water rates, where the opinion was delayed about six months, six months maybe longer, and it gives the impression that the city was not looking into the matter. I believe that, as this item is brought forward to the city council, and I know it's coming forward sometime in the future, I would like to ask the, I would like to ask the city attorney to include an analysis of the constitutionality of the item as it relates to the constitution, the state constitution that Mr. Harry Zavos was quoting.
Certainly, Councilman Manukian, we are actually working on that right now, and we'll have it shortly to the council.
Okay. On another note, I would like to, dealing with Memorial Day, I would like to ask everyone to attend Memorial Day celebrations throughout the city. Here in Glendale, it's at 11 o'clock, as Mr. Biggs mentioned, behind the city hall. I know.
9:30 is one of them.
9:30, 9:30.
8:30 in Locust Center.
8:30 in Locust Center, 9:30 in here in Glendale, behind City Hall. In the past few years, the reason why I bring this up is because in the past few years that I've attended, I've heard individuals say that, you know, the turnout is not as big as in the prior years. So it is kind of a concern to me that people are not interested in attending events, paying their respects to the individuals who paid their lives for the freedoms that we have today. So I would like to ask everyone, instead of planning for your barbecues and family get-togethers, that you pick anyone at any time of these memorial celebrations and attend them. I will try to attend both the Montrose and the Glendale one, so I urge everyone to do the same. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Najarian?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like you to know that at no time is Mr. Moho going to dictate my actions upon the dais, especially my deliberative privilege to address comments to my colleague, and I want him to know that as well, that at any time that he commences his comments, he should complete those comments without any hesitation or without directing any remarks to myself or to any other colleague on the dais who may have a comment to make to any one of us or to read a document. I think he's, I don't know where he's going. I did register for the selective service when I turned 18. I marched down to the post office in Chesterland, Ohio, and put my name and address and signed the form. I was, I was not drafted.
What year was it?
1978. So I'm not sure, he started talking about my family. I don't know where he's going with that, but I'm just going to let that go for now. As far as Mr. Zavos goes, I didn't, I haven't read the thrust of his argument, but I know one of his points that he seemed to be making is that we need to put the electric rates to a vote, two-thirds vote of the people, because we provide electricity at no charge to members of the public. He used a streetlight as the example. I would argue that lighting a streetlight is not providing electricity to members of the public. Lighting a traffic signal is not providing electricity to members of the public. It's a means by which the city controls traffic. It's a means by which the city controls the streets to keep them free and clear. We don't have free outlets throughout the city where someone can plug in a device or a cord and take power. We're providing photons in some respect. When the audible signal for the ADA compliant signals are activated, yes, they run on electricity, but we are not providing electricity to that pedestrian who wishes to cross the street. We are making sure that our streets, for our own benefits and our function as a municipality, are being considered and are being advanced. I'm not sure if that's something that you're considering in your argument, but I don't see us giving electricity to the public.
Any other comments? Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting in honor of Carl Messick?
Did you have any bio, anything to read on him? Bio or anything to read?
Oh, before you do that, I just wanted, since you were talking about the Forest Lawn events, that there is a really nice event. Sorry, you were talking about Memorial Day events. There's a wonderful Memorial Day event at Forest Lawn every year. I can't remember what time it is. Does anybody know?
That's at 11.
That one's at 11. So you could conceivably hit all three. But the Forest Lawn one is really a great one to take kids to, because they really have a lot of sort of activities going on, and it's very interesting. They have speakers, but they also do a 21-gun salute, and I recommend it highly.
Motion to adjourn.
Hold on.
Member of the House.
Carl Messick.
Carl Messick.
You are adjourned.